All right, you good, Dr. Rennie?
Yep.
Police, we good? Okay. All right, it's 5:00 PM, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All righty, we'll begin with a quick roll call, Mr. Barton.
Here.
Mr. Freshair.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
And Dr. Manning's here, we're good to go. If anybody will stand for the pledge. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Okay. No delegation listed. Okay. No reports, so we'll start with the consent agenda and begin with the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2024 regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, so we've been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the August 12th, 2024 regular meeting. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All righty, word of finance, Ginger, you have the floor.
I make motion to approve the bills for payment as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been a motion and seconded to approve the bills for payment as submitted. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, open enrollment, Dr. Manning.
There's one more thing there.
Oh, let me get back.
There's a budget supplement there.
I missed it, okay. Budget supplements, is there, Ginger, you have anything we need to know?
It's vocational, federal.
We did receive a little bit of additional funds based on the difference between what I budgeted and what the grant award came in, were a little bit different on two of the vocational ones. So you're seeing the supplements now, and then Brandon and I met this week, and we'll have a meet again, and you'll be seeing the transfers to get the money in the proper lines.
Make a motion to approve the budget supplement as submitted.
Second.
Okay, so we've been properly moved and seconded to approve the budget supplement as submitted. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, now we're to open enrollment.
Yeah, this is a student transferring into Gilmer County High School, Sarah Wright from Lewis County. Make the recommendation to approve that open enrollment request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment request as presented by the superintendent. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All right, that'll move us into new business. And we'll begin with approval of bid for GCHS freezer cooler project. And I see Mr. Frazier or Dr. Manning, whoever's going to cover that out.
Well, actually, we have paused that bid, and I just wanted to give you an update. The reason being is we're, we wanted to look into a different type of generator. The specs on the generator was a diesel generator, and we thought that we might want to look into a natural gas generator. So I think it's going to take about an extra week.
Yes, we, with the new bid, it'll be September 5th.
September 5th. We thought it would be important to go with a natural gas generator. That way, we wouldn't have to worry about if we were in a duratio-style storm, trying to get access to diesel and hauling diesel and doing all of that. So we're expecting it to cost a little bit more, probably, but we're delaying that bid with that new spec as a natural gas generator.
I think that's a good idea.
Very good idea. One question, how many amps will it generate, do you know?
I don't off the top of my head.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask is because the one for the, for the vocational freezers, it's, it'll run quite, quite a bit, but it's too far to, too far to run line expensive-wise to like bring it to the gym and...
The one of the, the one out there at Tampa Process requires 70, it's 100. And that's what we could get at the time, we had a lot of money we had to spend.
Right.
Generators are hard to get, so we, we went with one bigger. Now, we did put in this bid as an alternate for this, the one we're talking about right now, as an alternate, if we can afford it, of hooking up the gym lights.
Right.
So there is going to be a cost the board will look at associated with gym lights.
Right.
It also does the current, what we call USDA freezer, the one right there where the cooks bar, it also could be hooked up to it.
Right.
Both of our freezers for food will be hooked up to it.
Right. Well, the reason I was asking was if it was going to be big enough to run, run the gym lights if, if need be. That was the reason for my question.
I do think it is, yes, that's, that's in the specs. And, you know, we had to make the decision whether or not to go to natural gas, and that we already have the plumbing there, so the availability for us to do that, we just thought we would delay, even though it's just a few days. But the natural gas seems to be the way that we would like to go if we can afford it.
That's a much better, much better decision and route. I agree.
All righty, if there's nothing else on freezer project, we'll move that to a future agenda and move down to out-of-state filter request, Dr. Manning.
This is field, six grade students to visit the World War II memorial ship in Marietta, Ohio. Of course, that's an out-of-state trip, so even though it's just right across the way, we, we have to get approval from the board on those. It's on September 13th. Funding will come from the class of 2031 local school monies, doing fundraisers to cover the cost. And I'd like to make a recommendation to approve that field trip request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we've been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation to approve the out-of-state field trip request as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that main motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. All righty. We're to discussion slash possible action of the MOU for a PRO officer, Dr. Manning.
We're very close on the PRO. I'd like to be able at the next meeting, present an MOU that you guys can fully be aware of, know the stipulations, we budgeted those funds. We're working with the sheriff's office, we're working with the county commission, and we're very close on having a MOU that will be able to be approved by the board, approved by the county commission, and then hopefully a posting will go out to hire an officer. So I'm on the agenda for the next county commission meeting, and we're hoping that you guys will be forwarded in plenty enough time to both sides agree, sign the MOU, post the job, and then we can obtain the funding through the Justice Assistant Grant as well. So we're very, very close. There's been some roadblocks and been some different things that we've had to work through, the way things are posted and funding and all of that, but I think we're very close. I just wanted to give you an update on it.
Okay, any questions?
No, I talked, I talked to Lance with the county commission, though. He was really excited to hear that we were, we were gaining progress too on that. I think the whole county's looking forward to it.
All right, so that'll move us out of new business then. We have no old business, so we'll move to personnel.
Move pursuant to 6-9A-42 of the West Virginia codes, the board go into executive session to discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public, might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Second.
All right, so we've been properly moved and seconded to go to executive session to discuss personnel. Is there any further discussion or amendments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries.
All right, Dr. Mann, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to arise from executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, we will start on the personnel agenda and begin with the professional section. Dr. Manning.
Recommend Nathan Haynes, ALC teacher administrator, and Jeanette Ramazan, family consumer science teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the professional section of the personnel agendas. Ring for their discussion or amendments to that made motion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Obstain. Motion carries. All right, on to service.
Desiree Rogers, substitute cook, and Tracy Speck, substitute cook, can make the recommendations for hire.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the service portion of the personnel agendas. Ring for their discussion or amendments to that made motion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, we'll go to extracurricular.
Recommend Jacob Yocum, after-school credit recovery, Kelsey Hickman, resignation program coordinator after school.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the extracurricular portion of the personnel agendas. Ring for their discussion or amendments to that made motion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right.
Excuse me. Also want to recommend Heather Fair, special education homebound instructor.
So moved.
Second.
All righty, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Heather Ferris as special education homebound instructors. Any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
All right, on to supervisory aides. This is just the approval of all of our aides that have agreed to be supervisory that we would use. Reading the list, Alexis Long, GCHS, Stacy Stonaker, GCHS, Cora Persinger, GCHS, Barbara Nielsen, Gilmore County Elementary School, Lou Ann Drake, Gilmore County Elementary School, Robin Roberts, Gilmore County Elementary School, Brittany C., Gilmore County Elementary School, Tammy Smith, Gilmore County Elementary School, Terry Stonaker, Gilmore County Elementary School, Diane Montgomery, Gilmore County Elementary School, Victoria Gordon, Gilmore County Elementary School, Jennifer Harper, Gilmore County Elementary School, Teresa Skinner, Gilmore County Elementary School, Debbie Schiffler, Gilmore County Elementary School, Tammy Loudon, Gilmore County Elementary School, and Tanya Talbert, Gilmore County Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the supervisory aides portion of the personnel agendas. Ring for their discussion or amendments to that made motion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? All abstain. Motion carries. All right, and now I'll turn it over to Dustin to do the next section.
I believe it's math and special education three-step increments.
This is in-state code, all of our math, special education teachers can receive a three-stepped increase. So we went through that list and conducted a review on each one of those folks' supplements, and this is just the approval process for those. It's Natalie White, Heather Ferris, Tamara Moore, Avon McKinry, Melissa Jones, Sonya Hartzorn, Connie Grog, Amber Frazier, Rebecca Chesser, Tanya Stewart, Crystal Smith, Alicia Schaefer, Jacob Persinger, Michaela Moore, Annette Huffman, Leah McIntyre Smith, Raven Friend, Tina Foster, Leslie Campbell, and Katrina Frederick Howes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
All right, bring him back in. Where's he at?
All right, we'll move to the next section.
All right, this is an increased rate for certain bus runs. We've been asked to look for different ways to put some funding out there for bus drivers to receive some additional monies by taking trips. And we went through our budget and figured out that we can provide ALC run, career center run, and activity run with a trip rate for the ALC run is $10 per trip to $15 trip. Career center run from $30 per trip to 45, and then activity run from $30 a trip, what it is currently, to $45 a trip. So that would increase those rates.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to increase the rate for certain bus runs listed on the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All righty, and then on to volunteers.
One volunteer, Melissa Wood. This would be contingent upon completion of our county volunteer policy paperwork.
So moved.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Melissa Wood as a Gilmore County Schools volunteer following completion of county volunteer policy paperwork. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. That moves us out of personnel, and we'll go to continuous improvement and have a data presentation by Ms. West.
Hello, Ms. West.
Hello.
How are you this evening?
I'm good. Something for you that we're ready to discuss.
Thank you, ma'am.
You are welcome.
Spigoty, ma'am. Mathematics.
So the packet of information I just gave you, we're going to begin with our goals. This was for the school year 23-24. And you can see that the goal as a county was to increase our reading scores from 37 to 45, math from 28 to 35, the on-track-to-graduate, 71.92% to 80%, and then the chronically absent attendance rate to drop that from 30.18% to 25%. The two goals that I want to speak about this evening are the two academic pertaining to reading and math. And there's an image there on the first page that shows you a clip from Zoom WV. And so you can see what our data as a county looked like at the end of school year '22, the end of '23, and the end of '24. These percentages are based off of our juniors who take the SAT and our third through eighth graders who take the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment. And of course, one of the things that we see here, from last year to this year, there was a decrease in reading as a county by 4%. There was a decrease in math by 1%, and there was a decrease in science by 7%. If you go to the next page, there's a breakdown of the assessments, including our ninth and 10th graders who take the PSAT. This prepares them for the SAT as 11th graders. The PSAT 9 and 10 data does not, it's not part of the percentage that we see as far as the graphic we just looked at. But just to kind of give you a little information on these students, this is data based on what they were, their grade level they were in last year. So last year's ninth graders in ELA on the PSAT 9, they outscored the state 435 to 413. And our sophomore class last year in ELA outscored the state 453 to 438. Then if you look at math, our freshmen last year outscored the state 418 to 385, and our sophomores outscored 412 to 395.
Oh, that's good.
So those students are now our sophomores, and they are the juniors who will be taking our SAT this year. Okay? Now we'll go into the data that is figured to give us those percentages we looked at earlier, okay? So when you look at our last year's juniors, Gilmore County on the ELA was 436, the state was 468. That was the average. And then when you look at the math, last year's 11th grade was 420, and the state was 432. Then we come down to GSA data. This is our third through eighth graders again last year. The breakdown by school and then also the breakdown by grade level. So let's walk through the ELA first, okay? So as an entire school, Gilmore County Elementary School, their average overall was a 42.9%. Our fourth grade outscored the state in ELA 49% to 46%. And then if you look, I've also included a third column that shows growth. Now, these are not the same students. So last year's fourth grade, their score increased by 15% compared to the former fourth grade. So you're not really comparing students to students, if that makes sense.
Say that all again right there. Which, so which class are we? Is that the ones that are in the fourth grade this year or the ones that were last year?
So this data is on the fourth grade last year. They are now the fifth graders.
Now the fifth grade.
Okay? If you look at the ELA for our middle school, as a school, they averaged 29.4%. And so when you calculate the GSA data and the SAT as a county, our ELA was 34% and the goal was 45. When you look at the math data, starting with our third graders, as an elementary school, third, fourth, fifth, 50.4%. And when you look at the county goal, the goal was 35%. So our elementary surpassed greatly what our county goal was as a school. Then when you look at fourth grade, their score as a county was 55%, while the state's was 47. And our fifth grade was 38%, missing the state by 1.39%. And our, if you back up- And our, if you back up there to the fourth grade math, that group had a 10% higher than the previous fourth grade group. So some tremendous growth there in both the ELA and the math at the elementary. Our middle school math overall was 17.7%. And you can see each grade level compared to state. And there was growth when you look back at the previous sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. But when you average our SAT juniors and our third through eighth graders last year, math as a county was 28.9%. We did not, as a county, meet our 35% goal. The last section you see is science data. Fifth grade last year, our elementary, they scored 31% while the state was at 32%. So they missed it just by a point. And this group of fifth graders outscored the previous fifth grade by 2%. And again, that group is now our sixth grade. If you'll continue to the next page, I also went to SchoolDigger to find where we ranked in the state according to our schools. We have our elementary data and our middle school and our high school data. So elementary school, of the 368 elementary schools in West Virginia, Gilmore County Elementary is ranked 165th. Last year, they were 181, so they have improved. Yes.
Really down.
Middle school, there are 169 middle schools in West Virginia, and our middle school, sixth through eighth grade, is ranked 144th. That's a drop from 133rd. And I've given you some years you can compare there, five years worth to go back. And our high school ranking, according to SchoolDigger, are, the high schools in West Virginia, there are 112 high schools in West Virginia. Gilmore County High School is ranked 97th, and that is a drop from 39th. And this is data that I presented to our leadership team at the high school just about an hour and a half ago. Some action steps that we have taken thus far, some goals we have set. Of course, our focus visits will take place in September and February. The leadership teams are active at both schools. The elementary will continue to meet monthly, while our high school leadership team will meet every week. The local school improvement councils will be taking place at both schools. Information will be posted on both school websites, including their agendas and their minutes. There is school-level professional development plans taking place at both schools. At the elementary, it'll be every Tuesday with a focus on science of reading one week, numeracy one week, tech and assessment one week, and then just the grade level PLC to do some planning. High school plans to meet every third Thursday. And when those groups meet, it's not by grade level. It's a mix of grade levels and content area that they will come together during their plan for some professional development. The use of the adopted core curriculum in all content areas and walkthroughs, we've discussed with our administrators, the need to set goals, and then our support of those goals, and then helping them to monitor those goals. The final page of data that I have for you this evening is our goals for this school year. And these were written before we received our data. So we're going to stretch a little higher. In reading, our goal is to go from 38.30% to 47. Math, from 28.82 to 37. On-track-to-graduate, from 83.60% to 85%. And the chronically absent rate, from 26.19 to 23%.
Question, what principals and teachers, what kind of reports do they get that shows what concepts the kids are deficient in or did well in? Do they get such an animal?
So I shared this data this evening with our leadership team at the high school. There's a representative from every department on that team. Mr. Payne selected them, and then I will be sharing this out with all the staff members. Currently, our ninth through 12th grade is completing their first IXL benchmark. And I have been looking, I've been looking at the data, and that is for both math and ELA. Middle school has started their iReady assessments as of today. We're working through the math first and then the ELA. We've made it very clear this year that we do not want students taking those benchmarks, both content areas, on the same day, but trying to establish a better assessment atmosphere. Those platforms have multiple reports that teachers can access.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the achievement test feedback.
The general summative data?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, ma'am. Do they have something that shows I was deficient in this area? Like if I take the parent one, I can determine from my kid, I can determine where they were deficient. Do the schools get the thing that says, like in third grade, the kid couldn't do two-place addition, let's say for instance? There were so many that missed that, so you know that's the problem that you need to address that's what I'm asking.
When you look at the math in general summative, it's broken down by the domain. So for example, numeracy, and it tells you if they are on grade level, below grade level. There are reports that can be generated that give you by standard what that student is lacking and what that student is.
Right. Do we do that? I suppose is what I'm asking. As a teacher, if my kids are not performing at a level that I want them, if I don't know where they're weak, all I get is a score that says I'm 40 percentile.
So.
And I don't know where they were deficient, I have no way of knowing what to work on to correct that situation. So is there a report that comes from that test that shows this is where they're weak?
There is data analysis that takes place with the iReady data as well as the general summative. And I can, what I'm meaning by general summative is throughout the year, they take, there are questions that have been previously used in general summative that teachers now have access to, and they create the test based on standards. And then from that, they can generate the standards that students are lacking. And that's how they then plan their instruction.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? So I think can and are looking at are two different things. So are they looking at stuff and using it?
We have some student, we have some teacher leaders who do, and we have some that we need to better support.
And then just to like anybody that's like watching or listening from the public, like, you know, testing, that's a pretty easy concept. But when you're actually talking about testing like this, I just want to clarify, I was even talking with these guys earlier, like the high school ranking, we're ranked 97th out of 112, though. That is just looking at one class at that high school. That's.
That data?
Yes.
That's based on.
The junior class.
SAT.
Junior SAT. So it's not like our whole, you know, student body at our high school is, you know, sitting at that 16th percentile or 13.4 percentile. It's just that that class is where it's.
Third through eighth grade and 11th grade.
I just wanted to clarify that for anybody that might be listening, because it's a, a lot of times, it's all grouped in and stereotyped all as.
We kind of knew that this was going to happen. We've said that. We've alerted you guys to that. Our scores for PSAT 9 and 10 are both above the state average, and 10th with our incoming 11th grade and our upcoming 10th graders. But that doesn't mean that, you know, how we analyze data and what we've got planned isn't important. That is important. And Mr. Barton, we have, we have teachers, and I'm sure Mr. Price will go in, we look at those reports in depth about where we're, where our students can be impacted at each grade level and the blueprint of the test and what we call the right/wrong responses and things like that. There are some teachers that are better at it than others, but I think for the most part, everybody's trying to. And the elementary school is focused on that, and their test scores show that, too.
I understand what you were saying, though, Larry, as far as like seeing where we're deficient, like actually like finding the nail, which nail to hit is what.
Because, like I said, well, you got, you got a list of where we were deficient, and we knew where to, where to focus to take care of that. Like part of the elementary is at 50th percentile proficient. So there's 28% that's in the third quartile. That's partially proficient. It doesn't take, I won't say it doesn't take a lot of effort, but with a little effort, you can move 10% of those partially proficient that meet standards up to the second quartile. And when you do that, you've raised, you've raised your average. And some of that may be that the student didn't understand the question. If you taught him mathematics and addition, and it was all vertical, and on that test, it's horizontal, and I know that that's a fact, and then they can't perform well. It's not that they couldn't do the operation, they didn't understand it. So that's a simple fix to get those kids moved up. And when you move, the best and the brightest anymore doesn't raise your percentage in your, you have to move them out of Quartile 3 to Quartile 2 if you want to raise it, so everybody, the parents, know that. You can, your best and the brightest, that doesn't get, doesn't get you the bang for the buck. You can move everybody from Quartile 2 to Quartile 1, you didn't raise your percentage. You got to move them from 3 to 2. And hopefully, you can move a lot of them out of 4 to 3, and then you can get some of those 3s moved to 2. Then you're up, you've upped your ante. But you got to know where to, you got to know where to go to be able to do that. And you don't know if textbooks aren't written for West Virginia. They, the state, when they approve textbooks, they approve ones that are most closely aligned. And if you don't know where you're weak, you can't provide the extra, extra work to teach to get that. If a kid is tested on something they've never had, it's not fair to the kid. It's not fair to the teacher to be held accountable if that's the case, or the administrator. What you, what we, what we test, we have to teach. And if we don't, then we're not doing what we need to do. And that's my concern. If I know where, if I know what's on there, and that my kids were weak, then I know what to prepare to see that, I know what to tell my people, this is what we need to work on. And if I don't know that, I can't tell them. And I looked, I looked for three days trying to find that, and the only paperwork I could find was for a parent. And I can take that and take every kid in my class, and I can tell where I'm deficient. But surely to goodness, there's a whole lot easier way I'm doing that, I would hope.
Yeah, there's teacher access to reports, there's student access to reports, and then of course, the parent reports are also, I believe emailed now. I believe it's all sent.
Are we using the same testing system as last year, or did we switch?
We're using iReady for our kindergarten through eighth grade, but we're using IXL for ninth through 12th grade.
What we used last year for?
iReady.
We just, it was the first year. It was the launch last year.
Right. But so we're switching at the high school level.
They also utilize IXL, but to say they used it with assessment benchmarks and in the assessment calendar, I can't answer that.
Do you think iReady wasn't compatible with the state, or?
So with iReady, once you hit the eighth grade level, let's say I'm a sophomore, and I'm on fifth grade level math, I have access to that. But if I'm a ninth grader and I'm actually performing at a 10th grade level, there weren't resources through the iReady platform. Those have not been developed yet. And so for our students below grade level, there were resources if they were below eighth grade level. But for our ninth through 12th, who are on or above, there weren't resources through that platform, but there are through the IXL.
I would, like you said, they were using Khan. I'd suggest somebody ought to look at that. It's free. And if you look at, if you look at the College Board website, the first SAT prep they give you is Khan. There's only two on their website. Khan is one, and theirs is the second. And they, they almost statistically guarantee 100%, 100-point gain in 20 hours of work from the student. And it's for eighth, ninth, 10th, and then the SAT test for 11th graders. Now, like I said, you can have all the programs in the world, people aren't using, paying attention to them. It's not worth a hill of beans. So there's a lot of resources, but if we don't use them, I know parents said they were sending their kids to, to different places to get tutored, when you can log on and get the best, that's what they're saying, the best prep there is, and it's free, then I think we ought to be using it, and parents ought to be made aware that that is, that is there, free and available.
Well, Khan Academy is a tile on the high school symbaloo, and I am told that there are teachers who utilize the Khan Academy. I also know Dr. Many is interested in looking at another resource.
Right.
To support our students.
And it also integrates with Khan Academy. Mastery Prep and Khan Academy can be used together.
Right. And Blue Book, Blue Book, which comes from the, from the SAT people, will download, Khan and SAT used to be together, and they kind of went apart, but Blue Book will download to Khan. And I'm not pushing any particular program, but if you got one that says, when people that make the test says, this is the best prep there is, that's what I would be using. I mean, that's, but that's me. I, like I said, I'm a competitor. I don't like coming in second. I like being first. I like to win. Test scores are winning. You compete. You compete for a scholarship. The higher your score, the more money you get. So.
Well, I'd like to report back, once we have all of our grade levels with their first benchmark completed. Our high school will complete this Friday, the 30th. And then the middle school, it has opened as of today. And then our elementary, we're giving them some time to catch up, just remember some of those things that they really do know, that they just need a little bit of time. So we'll look at September 9th for that benchmark to open. But all benchmarks should be completed by Friday, September the 13th. And then I will come back and report to you then, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. West.
All righty. Let her move us into the superintendent's update. Dr. Many.
I've just talked a little bit about test scores and where they're going, but I will say that if you look at the data in the ninth and 10th grade and where our elementary is going, I think that we could have a really good test score year this year and rebound some of that, that loss with that seems like a very low-level performing couple groups there. So we have, we have hired an electrical teacher at the Gilmore County Career Center, and I just wanted to make it publicly known that we've hired that person because we need to get some kids into that program. If you know of anybody that would like to be considered for that program, get with the principal, Mr. Payne, and, and we really want to get that program up and going. And it's kind of off to a late start at the beginning year, but hopefully we can get some kids in there. I think there's a handful of kids already, but that kind of career would really be good for our local community. And I already gave the update on the pro officer, but that was one of the things that I wanted to update you all on, that we are very close and hopefully will continue that September 5th, we got the freezer bid opening. We should be able to know then exactly when the start of that project is. There's been various types of projects, and I sent you your weekly updates from all the directors. We've done a lot of extensive work down there on the football field. We've put in new drains. The maintenance folks are really working good. I want to give those guys kudos. You can see, we've got some more stuff added to this room. But overall, the start of school went well. We haven't had too much issue, and we plan on just digging into those scores and working with our teachers to make Gilmore County better as we move on.
All right. Now, move us into board member comments, and we'll start with Mr. Barton.
Well, dealing with, with the County Gilmore Career Center, the CNA pinning, they had a CNA pinning with Mini Hamilton and Elizabeth Healthcare Center, and that put 10 students that graduated there to work at, at Mini Hamilton. This summer, there are two restaurants during their summer camp that they made contact with, and they hired some of their ProStar students to work as waitresses and waiters during the summer. They'd also contacted with the Hope Gas, which is one of their partners, and they moved three of their classrooms around. moved three of their classrooms around to make room for the electrical that, that we have. And it was kind of unique, because eight of the 11 Hope volunteers that came to help move the rooms were former Career Center students. And in August, Ben Huffman provided CE training for the Calhoun High School, and they'll be working with, with Gilmore County High School, working with simulated workplace. And one of the places will be, they will be working together will be the meat shop, meat processing at our high school with their ProStar people, so they can provide cut-to-meat that they need down in ProStar to be able to do. On the 30th, when we play Calhoun, it's at, at Calhoun, there's open house at the Career Center from 3:00 to 5:00. They're also having a tailgate party for anybody who wants to stop by on our way down, stop and grab a hot dog, and, and look at, look at the facilities. They've done a lot of work there. And like Dr. Many said, we have hired, they have hired an electrical instructor. Now, so, people in Gilmore County and Calhoun will understand, according to the Union Stewart in Parkersburg, they, a student coming out of that school, graduating with two years, he would be able to make 37 bucks an hour. That does not include vacation pay and holiday pay. Once you figure that in, the Union Stewart says it's $70 an hour. So, that's nothing to sneeze at. Come out of high school, and you can go to work as adjournment. And if they can get the right program, like Wood County has at Caperton, that deals with their electrical people, it's possible that with a little extra work, a student can come out of there with a master's electrician. That's a little farther down the line. Parkersburg has been doing that for a long time, but their kids can come out and be a master electrician. And that's much more money than, than the adjournment makes. So, those are hopeful things, and things down there are looking up, they're working on their renovation. And I would, I would encourage, like I said, any parent that's interested in wanting to get free help with the SAT scores, I would look at SAT Suite, collegeboard.org-practice/kanacademy, and it will give that to you. It'll also generate them lessons if they don't score. I paid my grandson, which is a homeschool student, he's a sophomore, I paid him 20 bucks to take the test, so I could see what it would generate for me. And he took it, he scored 860, and it guaranteed that in 20 hours, not 20 days, not all year, 20, 20 hours of work, he raised his points by 100 points. That would have qualified him to get some free money if he was in college. So, that's a free benefit. And to the board members, I, when I came on, I gave, I went through the test scores, and I gave them last year in July data. Since I got those test scores, I, I put them on graph, I'm a graph person, where I can see what's going on. And like I said, the elementary in math, the, the school average was 50.38, which is, which is acceptable. But there's 28.5% of those kids that are in partial meat, partially meats group. You move 10% of those kids, and you're at 60. So, and moving those 10, once you determine where the weakness is, it's not hard to move 10% when you know where you're, where you're going at. Reading, there's 22% of them that's in partially met. You can move 10% of that, and that would have put you in, in the 50. So, we, we have to look at who we can move, and we have to do that to get them there. But like I said, you do those things. And I did the same thing for the, for the high school, where they can move, move their kids, and you can do that. I graphed everything. It's against Wood County, Campbell County, state average, and Gilmore County, and it's for, this year, I did it in math, reading, and science. And for Mr. Payne and Mr. Price, I've got a, I've got one for you two, if you don't mind looking at my hand scratching. But you can see where the dips are, where the things are, we did well. Like I said, third, third and fourth grades particularly in math and reading, they were, they were quite well. They were above the, in, in math, they were, they were above the state average, and in fourth grade, you were above Campbell, which, that's one of the bigger ones. Putnam's a little bit better, but I picked two that from years past, and I knew something about. So, I have a folder for you. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Frascher?
I was just reflecting on the, the scores, and, you know, just thinking, you know, we all come out here to serve on the Board of Education, not because it's some great power trip or anything, because we genuinely want the schools to do well. And so, we fully support those efforts. That's what we want, that's what we're pushing for. You know, disheartening sometimes to, you know, see the numbers go in the wrong direction to go down instead of up. You know, obviously, there are indicators that things are good, but we genuinely want the 11th grade this year to do well, and we, we want all those ones to reflect. And you may think test scores don't really matter, or whatever, but, you know, you live in the world you live in, and the test scores do matter, so that's what the attention's going to be getting. So, that's all I've got to say.
Dr. Mallor?
Well, I'm pleased with the progress we've made at the elementary school. We still have room for improvement at the high school. I am not delusional. You cannot take a 10th grader and make up their deficit in a year's time. So, I'm not...
That's a good point.
Completely surprised at the test scores. Like everyone else, I hope for the best, but I'm also rational, and, you know, know that we can't fix everything in a year. So, you know, when we come back this time next year, now, if we haven't made some progress, I'm going to be upset, but I know we can do it, and everyone's focused now, and working hard towards the goal. And I have faith we're going to get there. We've got a lot of great kids, we've got a lot to offer in this community, in this county. And remember, regardless of what those test scores say, we are producing successful kids. So, you know, and that is our ultimate goal at the end of the day, is to produce productive citizens. So, while yes, the test scores are important, and yes, as a parent, I look at the test scores closely, so that I have some gauge on a national level to see how my children are competing. It is also not the only important thing with the child. And it's not, also, it is not the only indicator of success with the child. So, everybody, keep working hard. Next year, when we're sitting in this room, it's going to be a different story, and we'll have balloons and, you know, confetti and things like that. Also, we have the farm show coming up, September 3rd through the 7th, at the Recreation Center at the barn. And the sale is on the Thursday evening, September 5th. These kids have raised their animals all year. Everybody come out and bid and help support the future farmers and people that are going to feed us next. That's kind of important, so I think that's all I have.
Mr. Champ?
The first thing is, I want to ask Larry if that's an open offer, did anybody take that test for $20?
No. He was wheeling and dealing, he wanted more.
And then, if anybody, the farm show, I'm looking forward to that. If anybody wants to go half on a hog or a beef, preferably a beef, call me, I'm ready to, ready to chip in on that. I want to pay note, the football season started last week, and Larry had mentioned that they're going to, to, you know, our rival, Calhoun County, which are more like friends now, but, you know, I just hope to see a good turnout for the football team. And wanted to pay note, they are doing a fundraiser this Saturday at the golf course. They're, the football team is having a first annual golf match, which, I don't know if it's the first annual or just the new first annual, because I used to work that golf match when I was in high school. But I'm looking forward to that. And then, to the test scores, I think Hillary made up some good points, you know, you know, some kids just don't test well. And, and that doesn't, when you look at those scores, that doesn't take in, you know, our, you know, IEP students and stuff that, you know, have learning disabilities. There's, that is such a vast, when you start talking about that many students, that is so vast, that, you know, it's just a number. But I, I think we have, I think we have good teachers, and everybody's doing their part, and we just got to keep doing that, so.
All right. I'm not going to beat test scores into the ground. But now, just to start off with those, you know, I appreciate the data reviews, you know, again, you know, like Dr. Miller said, you know, some years are not going to be the greatest, other years, you know, they, of course, they increase. But, you know, I think there's, you know, a lot of good people that, you know, support our students, and, you know, make sure that, you know, they get what they need, and those test scores will go up, you know? And you just got to have, you have to work at it, you have to give them the resources that they need. You know, we're not in the classroom every day. I feel like, you know, Dr. Manchin says a president's a resource allocator. You know, the board and the superintendent to me should be a resource allocator. If they come to us and say, "Hey, we need this to improve," you know, test scores, you know, let's try to make that happen in some form or fashion. Real quick, there was a safety meeting. I want to thank Mr. Frazier for his work that goes into all those, because I've not been able to attend yet, but Lisa will send me the minutes and things. You know, the crisis plans and stuff that come out of those committees, you know, of course, I'm not going to go over in depth, you know, but the things that they talk about, you know, the different safety procedures, you know, that they, you know, come up with to try to make our students safe, I think are very important. You know, the staff, you know, they can talk about some of the issues with the equipment they have. I think we're looking into getting some different radio upgrades and different things coming out of that committee. And I hope to be able to attend the next committee meeting, but I just think that we're on track, too, with safety. I think that's a big concern, you know, for everybody, just, you know, no matter where you are, to make sure that, you know, students have a good learning environment and a safe learning environment is always important to make sure that we look that direction. And that's all I have. So, any other further comments? Hearing none, then a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All righty. It's been promptly moved to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.